All right now, please do. I guess.
Very cool. Really? Come here. Oh, very cool, very cool. Very nice. I know, especially in that part of South Carolina, too, there was some really diverse ones. Yeah, good to see you too. Absolutely, should be a fun one.
Yeah, I will. Hey, Mary, how are you? Don't know where I want to start with questions.
See you on the other side, good to see you as well.
Not that far. How are you?
A gold retriever? Exactly, that's exactly what they're about. We don't see gold retrievers. She is very, she's, today's what it's seven months, so she's seven times. So anyways, but she's.
You got bigger problems than letting them.
Hey, where can you go to the shop? I want to get that spider. But then, but then about this side, you know, my wife. My dog, her entire life. The only time she got to. One time or she got.
Oh, no, you're fine, that's totally fine.
Sure?
Yeah. Brad, how you doing, man?
It's difficult to find.
Driving, started driving up here for Malcolm, turned around, came back. I've been in this room forever. I'm so lazy with the streaming, it's just like, I have not been. Good start, day out, did this look good? Sure. Is how many you were doing? Hollywood, Charlotte, Nashville, New Orleans. You could mix and match and pull things together and have an off day. Now, in your position, it's a little harder to have an off day, like, we're kind of. Building, the uptown building fiasco. Basically, our deficit is about forty thousand a year, that's exactly how much we pay. Actually, the biggest problem is. Spend, get the money, turn it into something useful. Biggest fear is they'll raise like fifty-five percent of the money. Spend enough for the, I mean, we need to just use this point, be like, six or seven more years in the lease. Let's just buy it. How I put money into it, you know, it's just. It's hard, and it's hard.
Hundred percent.
That's an ounce, not a press conference.
It's like, it's, it's a tough, you know, because in the old days of newspapers, they'd have like, less of content. And it kind of this new age of media, coming in, what you're doing, what Tony does, what you're like, it's hard to hide. It's all out there now, you just watch.
Yeah, I mean, if I.
Politics in the government, James' education, those are my two. There are a lot of grant funded people. You know, the story balance. That's a story for a fifty person newsroom from eighteen fifty five.
You're a much younger man.
That is, that is, we got Braxton, which is his greatest legacy. I think we're gonna bump the Pope for this.
I don't know.
Let me ask. Hey, are we bumping the Pope for this? Well, is the Pope selected, or is it just like?
It's true, it's fine, Brad.
They accidentally took the Pope, uh, special report.
Master control.
Yeah.
That explains why Mike's hot. We didn't mean to do it.
No.
First day? First day, Jeff?
First day, first day of the rest of my life. We're doing it now, okay, all right.
Hello, everyone. It's good to see you. We've got some guests, I see, in the, um, room with us as well. I want to say thank you for coming out today. All right. This is always a difficult thing that you have to do, that really kind of just strains you in the way that we should behave and act and perform. But I could not let it go with the allegations made by Councilmember Watlington against this organization. They are serious and they damaged the reputation of this organization. To be clear, these allegations are unfounded. And she, if she has any proof, she needs to provide that to the city attorney's office, who is duty bound to investigate. You know, we have a legal and ethical obligation in this community and this organization to follow the law. And part of my job as mayor is to lead with the facts. Not everyone may agree with that. But I tell all of us that stand here today, took the oath of office. And that oath of office means a lot to this community. If I have something to say, usually I say it, I may not be the nicest way to say it, but I try my very best to put my name on it and provide facts for this community. I've lived in Charlotte since I was in college. I spent most of my adult life working for this organization that I serve. And I want you to know that I would never embarrass or harm what I consider to be the greatest city in this country. I want to address Chief Jennings. As I've said before, and often, I believe Chief Jennings to be the best police chief in this country. He has dedicated more than thirty years of his life to serving this community. And he's led what I believe with dignity, honesty, and integrity. The chief was publicly attacked by a former council member, who stated his intent was to damage his reputation and end his career. I owe the chief an apology for not publicly supporting him then. I also support the men and women of CNPD, who put their lives on the line every day. They too have taken an oath to uphold the law and protect our community. This council has worked with and will continue to support the men and women who protect this community. Now, we have a number of the council members behind us tonight, but I want to also recognize that Councilmember James Mitchell and Councilmember Lawana Mayfield could not be here today because of illness. But I've spoken with them, and they want to share this statement on their behalf. Their statement is, "We stand with our colleagues and we share their commitment to work with respect and honesty." And so I know that this is something that we all want to have end in a way that everyone can be agreeable, but sometimes it just doesn't work that way. So right now, what I believe is that we're going to have a review by the council members, but first, I've asked the attorney, city attorney Anthony Fox, to address what he can at this time, and then we will follow up with Malcolm Graham, Councilmember Malcolm Graham. So with that, Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. North Carolina law is pretty specific in terms of the authority that it gives the city, the city council, to deal with matters. One of the specific laws deals with the ability to respect personnel privacy. When this council deals with personnel of its, of, of the council or of the city, it is obligated to comply with the Personnel Privacy Statute that maintains the confidentiality of the information that is contained within an individual's personnel file. The other body of law that's important is the ability to go into closed session, because the General Assembly has deemed it important enough to confer upon cities the ability to go into closed session for particular purposes. The law also provides that when you go into closed session, that that information is confidential. It's not to be shared, and it actually imposes criminal sanctions against anybody, any individual that is found to have violated that law. Now, with regards to the matter that many of you have, that have read about in the, in the, in the media and in the, in the papers, that is a matter that was conducted in closed session. Our council has been instructed by me, and consistent with North Carolina law, not to speak about that matter, and they cannot. The other thing that controls the behavior of this council and the city is the code of ethics that this council has adopted. This council has adopted a code of ethics that requires them to conduct themselves with, in accordance to certain standards. That code of ethics also allows for complaints to be filed for violations. If there are allegations of violations, that code of ethics provides that those allegations can be brought to the city attorney, and then I have an obligation to investigate those violations. I have not received anything to date with regards to the, the information that's out there in the media requesting that investigation, but we certainly will conduct one if those are brought to my attention. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I have enormous amount of respect for all of my colleagues that I serve with. And had the opportunity this morning on two occasions to speak with Councilmember Wallington. In fact, we spoke several times last week about a wide variety of city issues, mainly of which I agree with her own. But words matters. I've been serving as long as she has on the second tenure here on City Council for five and a half years. Total twenty years, including my first tenure and ten years in the North Carolina State Senate. So I've seen a lot. Words like unethical, immoral, illegal activities, disregard for dissenting opinions and the rule of law, uh, they matter a lot. They echo outside of the building. They echo to potential, uh, corporate, corporations are looking to house Charlotte home, to those that we want to retain, to economic development activities, et cetera. Words matter. It also matters that when we go in closed door session, that we keep those conversations confidential. It is why we are here today. This is not the first time that we have had a leakage from our executive session on matters that are important. They impact the ability for the city council and the manager office to have a relationship that works, that's built on trust and transparency. Leakage matters. I also called for the mayor and the manager, if appropriate, uh, to begin an investigation on the leak itself. I think that's really, really important, because we have to remain and build trust internally in the building, as well as externally in the building. It also matters how we process our work. It also matters when we disclose, what we disclose, and to the extent we can disclose. It also matters how we treat one another around the dais. And so, the dissenting opinion, we have debates, sometimes we win, sometimes we lose, but every opinion, every thought is heard. And then there's a vote. And then we move on. This is a great community, a great government staff, council members who are working full-time for part-time pay, and committed to doing the work. And do we get it right all the time? No. Are we able to correct our behavior? Yes. Are we committed to doing the work? Absolutely yes. And doing it in a way that is transparent, that is open, that is ethical, and honest. Many of the leaks to the media in front of me are half-truths about a wide variety of issues, and because we cannot disclose, they go unanswered. We will do better. We will stand by this administration, this management team, and continue to do the work for the city of Charlotte. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dante Anderson. I am the mayor pro tem and the representative of District One for the city of Charlotte. It is unfortunate that we stand before you today, under the dark shade of allegations of immoral and criminal activities from a member of this body, this board of directors, for over five and a half years. Charlotte is the fourteenth largest city in these United States, operating under a well-managed government with a multi-billion dollar balanced budget. Our airport is one of the, is the sixth busiest, with one of the highest credit ratings possible. Our municipal and enterprise entities are regarded as gold standard among peer cities and others, large and small. We should all be proud of the city government that is responsible for Charlotte, the Queen City's operations. Everyone, every entity, has an opportunity and room to get better, to enhance, to be more efficient, to do better. Charlotte is no different. Please be assured that the operations and the management of our city is of gold standard. In addition, I'd like to take the time to thank the chief of police, the deputy chiefs, the majors, and all officers of CNPD, for their dedication to the safety and the lawfulness of the Queen City. Our chief stepped up when there was a void of leadership. Those with a discerned understanding of leadership leaned into those moments, clear-eyed, of the gravity of that role. The chief did so and saw us through a number of tenuous situations throughout the years. I want to commend the chief's leadership and express my gratitude for his dedication to the city of Charlotte.
So, um, not to belabor a point, um, I am Marjorie Molina, and I represent District Five, um, which is East Charlotte. Um, not to belabor a point, and I got notes, but I can tell you exactly what I need to First off, I am absolutely proud of the city that we live in, the one that we call home. And as many of my colleagues here have stated today, um, we have a lot to be thankful for. Um, this news conference is overshadowing what we should be celebrating as a balanced budget that will not raise our taxes, um, with the highest credit rating. Again, um, according to who you ask and when you measure, we're the fourteenth or fifteenth largest city in the United States of America. We have the sixth busiest airport, and we have nearly a million humans that call Charlotte home. And words matter. How we talk about our home, how we conduct business in our home, and how we administer decisions in our home. Every person, whether you work for the city of Charlotte, or you work for a private institution, has a right to privacy when it comes to work matters. And it is for that reason this conversation was held in closed session. It was not to withhold any particular information from the public, it was to respect the privacy of an employee of the city of Charlotte. I can't overstate where we were nearly one year ago today. We experienced one of the worst tragedies, the worst tragedy, in our city's history, where four law enforcement officers were killed in East Charlotte. And four additional members of our team was wounded. And to be the leader of an institution at that time, at such a high level of impact, I can't imagine what that must have been like for our chief. I remember joining them with many of my colleagues that are standing right here today, where most of our officers were in tears. Um, just a week ago, the Charlotte climb for Tunnel to Towers, we witnessed the widows of officers that will never see their husbands again, tell us in a plea, "Thank our chief", they thanked our officers, they thanked our public safety officials, and they praised the city that we call home. And it is so unfortunate that just one year, just one year later, we're in this place right now. Um, I still own the same level of honor and respect for every last one of the human beings that provide public safety service to our city and our region, whether that be our fire, whether that be our police, or our medic, or any human that decides to step up to keep us safe. And I think many of us have to be the same way, because it's an institutional portion of what keeps Charlotte the city that she is. I would be remiss if I didn't say that the statements released by my colleague were not extremely strong in nature. I have not spoken to her to get her sentiment, or understand what her rationale was. Um, and as the attorney mentioned, if there is something that she feels that would be in order for investigation, she has a right to come forward and make that known, so that if it's warranted, an investigation can take place, and she should. Um, but I implore the community members, not only in East Charlotte, but in our city, to know that the ones of us, all of us, that stand here, we hold this honor of representing this city in very high regard. Um, it is an absolute honor to sit here and be elected by the people that call Charlotte home, and have the honor to make those decisions. And I know that we do that with integrity, and with the highest honor for what we are doing and administering decisions for, um, the fiduciary responsibility and, and anything else thereof. So, um, thank you for your time today, and I think my colleague, Ms. Ashmira, will be speaking now.
I'm Dimple Ashmira, Charlotte City Councilwoman at Large. I did not prepare remarks for this, but I'm going to speak from my heart. I did have an opportunity to speak with my colleague, Councilwoman Victoria Watlington. I'm here today to not attack my colleague, or point fingers, but I'm here today to send a crystal clear message, because this is the right thing to do, that I stand here with the city of Charlotte and our residents. Let me assure you, there is no illegal activity or corruption going on in our city. And as the Chair of the Budget Governance and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, that is something, I take it very seriously. Obviously, there are processes that we can improve on, and I have had that conversation with some of my colleagues, including Councilwoman Watlington. But we can do that by working collaboratively, without silencing anyone's voice, while working with the city attorney, the city manager's office, to ensure there is greater transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ed Griggs, and I serve, uh, District Seven on Charlotte City Council. Mayor Lyles, thank you on this occasion and all occasions for your even-handed leadership. We appreciate you. It saddens me for Charlotte that a member of council would use scaremongering tactics like this to draw attention to herself. I'm not aware of any foundation for Councilmember Watlington's allegations, and it is important to note that they are not supported by any specific assertions of fact, in respect of which she could be held responsible. These are wild allegations, it's not even clear what they mean, but they are offered in such a way that she doesn't have to defend them. It should be noted that Charlotte city government has robust controls in place, in the form of internal and external audits, as well as close scrutiny by the rating agencies that award Charlotte's debt, the highest debt rating available, AAA, based in large part on how well the city is managed. The budget process spearheaded by Manager Jones has won national awards, and of particular note, CNPD, under Chief Jennings' leadership, announced a significant decrease in crime in the city in the latest reporting period. Charlotte owes Chief Jennings a date of gratitude for his long years of dedicated service. We are now at an important juncture in our city's history, with major initiatives underway in the areas of mobility, housing, the environment, equity, and on many other fronts that will make Charlotte a great place to live for decades to come. When I visit other cities, I always come home grateful for the many advantages we have here. There are always things we could do better, but we should never lose sight of the fact that we, as a community, all of us who live here, should be proud of Charlotte. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all of you for being present here today, because this was a tough time for us to actually review and look at what our colleague, Victoria Watlington, meant by power corrupts, meant by illegal activities, meant by the level of unethical, immoral, and frankly, illegal. And that's a tough thing when we have an organization like this, that works so hard to improve the life for every citizen in our purview. So with this, I think that you've seen from the council members, the concern that comes when we're not sure of what direction we're taking. But I commend to our public, to all of our citizens, to all of the people that work here, and that we will be people, and as a council, that will make sure that we pay attention to our employees and that they come first, that we achieve the, um, goals that we set when we asked them to do this very difficult work, and that we, as a committee, as a group, as a board, however you call it, that we will work in harmony together. We'll get through this. It won't be easy, but I'm sure it can be done. Thank you very much. Now, the next statement I have is that if you would like to have an interview with any one of the council members, feel free to, um, come up and have that opportunity. So with that, this time, I hope that you've gained something about how this community can be, and how the council members believe. Thank you very much.